Call this meeting to order June 20th, 2016. Roll call. Smiley.
Here.
Hamill.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the last regular meeting, June 13th, 2016.
Anybody have any changes on this?
Looks good to me.
I'll move what we approve, the minutes.
I'll second that. Would you, y'all in all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes approved. Discussion and possible action regarding the following crossings, road crossings mid-stakes.
Mr. Three.
I'll make that motion.
Hold up. On favor?
Aye.
Number five. Discussion and possible action regarding made detention transportation plan.
It's for $234.
That's for the juvenile transportation?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to.
I'll second it. On favor?
Aye.
Number six. Discussion and possible action regarding the county ACCO SIG fiscal year 1617 renewal resolution and payment option.
Yeah, last year it was $111,034. This year it's $116,835.
Workman's comp went down, but our liability and casualty.
Five grand or so.
Right.
That's the one for one payment, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And what's our savings by making a long-term payment?
Uh, let's see if he put me a letter in here. Usually they do.
It's usually pretty significant.
Yeah, they're usually two options.
Yeah, it's gonna cost more, but it doesn't look like, since we normally do it in one, they don't really give you, they don't tell you how much it's gonna cost you.
Well, I mean, I just wondered, because it's usually.
It's a savings.
I think they said it was three percent, that's what he told me, it was three percent of the second half, you know, that you're gonna pay.
Right. All the motion that we renewed that.
I'll second.
In the one payment option.
On favor? Yes. Might be about $1,500 probably savings.
So we need to sign here and here.
Aye.
On favor?
Aye.
And when I'll send one of those to each one of the sheds that shows that you can fit into vehicles.
Right. Did, uh. What's his name I had to get back with some information? I'll get with you, we'll call him and check.
Okay.
Discussion and possible action regarding the E-911 ACCO SIG fiscal year 1617 renewal resolution and payment option.
Now, this one was 4,500 last year, and this year it's 4,000, so it's went down.
Woo-hoo! I thought over that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll move we approve that.
In one option?
Yes.
Yeah, for the one, one payment.
There's two places to go on there.
If we got the money, there's no need in. No.
No, we need the savings anyway.
Yes.
We need to.
I agree. Save them.
Need to second that.
I seconded. Second that. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we should call him so we'll, to do, get a break on this one. Show favoritism, isn't it? One agency. Right. I thought maybe he would call us last week.
I did too. I couldn't ever leave a message, and I thought that was strange. Every time I called, it just went to his voicemail, and I didn't leave a message, so.
You know, I've started calling that lady that's the chairman, that county clerk. Hell, I get no information from her.
Yeah.
Number eight. Discussion and possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn by Carl Newton. He called me last week, and he wanted to, Saturday after the early voting over at the, or anywhere, if you're, he's gonna feed people hot dogs if they have "I voted" sticker on it. He wants set up on courthouse lawn, Saturday at noon, from 10:30 or 11:00 to 1:00 or something like that. And I called Brian to find out. Vince, the elections moved over to Professional Building, that's where their vote, he'd be far enough away, he couldn't see anything wrong, but we, Brian thought he ought to fill out a permit, just like everybody else that uses. So that's what it's about, so I'll make the motion that we approve that permit.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, okay. You'll move it, so I can get a free hot dog.
There you go.
Just go over to the election board and get your "I voted" sticker. Get me the whole roll of it.
Yeah, get me one.
While you're at it. Get like, put three or four on, maybe I get one or not though.
Yeah.
You guys approve that?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Is it Luke Dome?
Yes.
Yeah.
Isn't another candidate, yeah.
Okay, I ain't gonna give him any publicity. He's gotta sign South of Winoka out of an old car hood.
Hmm.
I thought, well, okay, but that's here and there.
Number nine. Discussion and possible action regarding the resolution to remove from inventory a savin' copier for the Health Department surplus to junk.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just, uh, well, next item, we can discuss it then. With numerous items, you have this.
I have a list. And I thought that'd be easier.
Are they?
In my minutes, I'll be more.
Number 10. Discussion and possible action regarding the resolution to remove inventory numerous items under $500 from the Health Department, and I'm pretty sure it's just a cleanup deal, kinda like the auditor has advised us to do, is to get that stuff.
I talked to her.
Under $500.
Lot of cabinets.
Steer to ask.
Got to sit around. Some of it junk. Are they, they moving stuff around?
No, I think they're just taking it off the inventory.
Yeah, just cleaning up the inventory, it's, we've got a lot of that going on, I can't handle it still.
Well, it's under.
Yeah, everybody's just been dragging their feet, and the auditor keeps reminding us we need to do that, so.
Pick up your feet.
So, did I get a?
No, I haven't got a motion or a second. I didn't know if everybody was done looking.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I better slide that back down, or we'll start over again.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you can have this one too, Lynn.
That's a long one, isn't it?
Yeah.
Or I put three items in the other one, might still.
Okay. Number 11. Discussion and possible action regarding the resolution to remove from inventory numerous items under $500 for District Two. And I'll make the motion, there, there's a lot of this stuff that I'd never seen, we found that it was already surplus before I even took office. Dated back to '04 and '05.
The shit he didn't really have back there.
So, anyway, I'll make the motion to do this for District Two.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It'd be a good idea, we have like a print release, but.
Right, but at least you get something to go off of.
Because I might run into somebody at a coffee shop, well, we do surplus items, you know?
Right.
And say, well, okay, there's surplus to ask in chairs, and I can give a decent answer, but it doesn't hurt you guys.
No, well, and a lot of that stuff's already gone. It's been surplus.
A lot of this stuff here.
Yeah.
It's just needed to be taken off.
Taken off inventory.
I understand. But I really find when I leave, particularly money things out of my stories, I'll get questioned about it. So, I'm gonna weigh up that money cost in, how much the transportation plan really is.
Mm-hmm.
I'll give a deal.
Number 12. Discussion and possible action regarding the resolution to remove inventory numerous items junk for District Two. I guess this is stuff we know has been, most of it is technical stuff, got computers and, uh, radio and stuff that has just quit, we surplused it, we got rid of it.
Making that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this is the real thing, that stuff that was sold and traded. And it was not surplus, and I never asked for taking all.
For the other one?
Wow. We found a lot of stuff.
That's a lot, big stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we started on that deal, like, when you bought that vehicle, then coming back and saying where it went, that's what happened. It wasn't ever finished.
Didn't finish yet.
Discussion and possible action regarding the resolution to remove from inventory numerous items sold or traded for District Two. And this list is, uh, it's not part of.
Oh. That's the next one.
Well, this isn't as big as it looks, but, I mean, it's just, uh, that page, the rest of these are the inventory sheets. So, anyway, I'll make the motion. Mowers that we traded last year, some trucks I got, I sold at seal bids, couple graders that were sold at auction, I believe, couple, and the other trucks sold at auction down at the CD auction, and pickup we sold. I thought we followed through on that deal.
On that pickup that you sold it?
To Hank Luddington.
I thought we did too.
I didn't find it.
Well, whatever, it's a '96 Chevy, so anyway, but anyway, I'll make the motion, we.
I'll second it.
Finish this up. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's heavy, pick it up. Close am I in here?
Yeah, two loads. Number 14. Discussion and possible action regarding the resolution to remove from inventory the grid D1 traded to Yellow House.
I'll make that motion. Jason's here just to run this, our POs and stuff that only traded. Did you bring that deal, that buy one, get one free deal, or?
Man, I left it. I'll bring it back, David. It's in the mail.
It is in the mail.
You made that motion, David, I'll second. Or all in favor?
Aye.
And that was that bid we did, it just was.
Right, that we opened last week, yeah. They're delivering her other one this morning.
Very good.
Can you come run it? I could get a picture. I could help her campaign.
That's very helpful.
Stand out on the end there. Just don't take a picture of the road or something.
Well, that could be pretty interesting, that could divert some calls.
See above ad.
Yeah.
I always wanted to learn how to drive some of that equipment, it could be fun.
Come on down.
Maybe if you fly.
It is for a few hours.
It is not anymore.
You gonna sign that, David?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll sign it.
It's yours. Number 15. Discussion and possible action regarding the estimate of needs for fiscal year 1617.
Okay, so, we'll still have, you know, a few of these that will change, because we don't have our exact amount, but this, so we'll have our state auditors amount and our building fund amount that will change, but, um.
Is this courthouse needs, or?
Yeah. And this is what the officers, you know, we're just gonna go ahead and approve them. You know, they came to us and.
Everything but our, everything but our money.
Right.
Well, no highway money, but that's what we budget for the real fire, the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Roger.
They have, each one of them have their estimate needs, but we have a pretty long list here of, of things that we, that's added to that categories.
Right.
Do, do we need to, we take action on this, prove, sign each one, or how do you want to do that?
Well, we've never, we've just done it in the minutes that.
Okay, okay.
That you have in your budgets, which this is, this is all of, if you guys wanna look at them, that's ready to go.
Have they changed since the preliminaries they put in?
One changed, and that was, um, in the assessor's office, due to, um, she, she had added $2,000 to her maintenance and operation, and that is because they are now being billed from OSU, when they have to come up here and work on their equipment, or work on their computers, then now they're getting invoiced for it, where before they weren't.
That was in the assessor's office?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we did have, up it 2,000 to, to get her by, but you guys can look through those.
And these are, are they projected, what they're, okay, is there anything in there that?
Last year versus this year?
Mm-hmm.
The ones that are in yellow are the ones.
Tax.
Sales tax, but these are, like, this is the DA's, his didn't change, there's the sheriff's, that's the difference, treasurer, and most of them only went up, you know, because of the 1, 2, and 3%.
What is, uh, number?
Some added a little travel, didn't they, to their travel for, because of the mandate at schools?
Yes, they went up in price, we used to pay 35, now we pay 125, yeah, so, yes.
Hmm, I don't know how to put it. Is there anything that we can put in this? I mean, it's, if we vote on this, if we vote this in right now, can we change it?
Oh, yes, this is just an estimate of needs, the final budget, the EXO's board and us have to approve.
Like if, like if our sales tax keeps going down, is there any way we can put the automatic trigger in? I know nobody wants to discuss that, but I do.
Sorry, what was it?
The, what kind of automatic trigger?
Well, if they're, uh, you know, this is what they think they need without any cuts.
Right.
And if, if our sales tax continues to dive, I think about December, they need to have some kind of automatic trigger that, that eases the, the load for next year.
We, we can't do a December deal, our budget, this is for the budget for the next fiscal year, it'll be July before we can do anything on that account.
It has to be, like. So, there's nothing that, that we, you just, you just take it, you take it in July?
Essentially, John, the, where we're at right now, the money we have collected for this in '15, '16, or we're going to, is for this budget we're talking about. Okay, so, we're essentially, if, if our sales tax and stuff continues to drop, there will be revenue for the next year, and come the next fiscal, come 2017, is when we'll have to make those cuts, if there's not enough money to, then.
So, let's just hypothetically say our sales tax falls another 50% from, from now to December, this, this time next year would be, I mean, we would be.
We'll be able to look at it always.
Jump us ahead here, we would be sitting here having the hard discussion that's saying, you ain't got the money to do that, so you're gonna have to do something.
Okay.
Right, for the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we can't predict the future, but the sales tax we have brought in this year is for next year's money.
That's got next year's cut.
Yes, is what I'm trying to get at. So, we'll, we'll be able to watch as we go along here, as to what kind of recommendations we have to make for the next year's budget.
And starting next January.
I just wanna, I just wanna be thinking about it, because it doesn't seem to, nobody seems to think.
We oughta be really good by next January, you know, February, to really know where we're at, so we can really start for the next.
Yeah, we'll either be really good, or we'll be really bad.
No, I mean, we'll know, though, by doing what the projection, how much we brought in, and how much it's dropped, if it continues to drop, we should have a good idea percentage-wise, kinda what each month's drop has been, you know, how many, be it to an average, or, you know, next year, say, look, it's just 10% behind.
Well, what I'm saying is, we've dropped, but they haven't. That's what I'm looking at. And if, if your, if your paycheck's going down, your grocery bill shouldn't be going up.
Right.
I don't think any of our offices spend excessively.
Well, I'm not, and I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that, and I don't want them to think that I'm the Grim Reaper, I just want them to, to understand that.
Need to be aware of.
That's tough times, is tough times.
Right.
That's part of being a king. Making tough choices that cut you deep.
Well, actually, I mean.
Part of being a leader, I guess, if you wanna call it.
We'll see, last month, month of June, our appropriations is, is where our sales tax really, really took the hit, and.
What, are we gonna sign all these, or?
No, you can just look at them, this is just, essentially, we're just, that's their estimate of needs, that's how much each, uh, it, it's not on there in comparison to last year, but that's essentially.
Right, uh, that's what this one page.
Yeah, that big page was.
1.3, what's that number right there, does that mean it's went up 1.3%? See, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
You know, tough times.
With the schools that we have to go to, you don't have much of a choice. You know, that's the, that's the thing, 1.3's not bad when you consider our schools went from $35 a class to $125 a class. And when they're mandated by the law, you don't have a choice, we have to go to them.
I understand that, but.
And a portion of that 1.3, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss for the next deal, because that's, uh, that's the 1, 2, and 3% wages is in the next item.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So that's part of that too, yes.
Yeah. I just, I, I just don't wanna end up being on the wrong side of where we need to be. And if you don't think ahead.
Never mind.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with you, but, I mean, by the same token, I, do we, do we penalize them, I mean, for one thing, I mean, as of right now, until we know for sure, and we get an advance warning, like I said, we're, we're free to sit here and watch the, the sales tax come by monthly, and where we're at in comparison to knowing what we, our needs are, and that's what the needs are, and that's, we can use last year's budget, just like I did this year, that, where we're at is at an even wash this year. I mean, we, we exactly, we have brought in with Advalorm and the sales tax, exactly what we're, we're putting out there, what it's costing us. Now, yes, a drop is okay, but in the same token, we'll, we'll say, for instance, this wind farm's coming in, and maybe that work doesn't start till the mid, till, like, the first of '17, or whenever, we'll, you know, we watch, do we make personnel cuts, and then the thing in six months picks back up? I mean, that's, that's been part of a planning process, it's went on for a long time, John, I mean, there's a reserve to take care of some of those bad times, to get, get ready for a good time, you know, I mean, that, that's been part of the plan, the long picture, in the reserves we've got.
Well, that's, that's the thing, I just don't wanna have to depend on our reserves too much.
Well, I, I don't question, it bears watching, but that's, if anybody's got a crystal ball, I'm welcome to look at it, if they can tell us what's gonna happen, you know, I don't know, but.
We just need to keep everybody aware of what.
Yeah.
And that's, that's basically.
No, I mean, we'll know though by doing what the projection, how much we brought in and how much has dropped, continues to drop. We should have a good idea percentage wise, kind of what each month's drop has been. You know, help make me into an average or, you know, next year say, look, it's just ten percent behind.
We've dropped, but they haven't. That's what I'm looking at. And it, if your, if your paycheck's going down, your grocery bill shouldn't be going up.
I don't think any of our offices spend excessively.
Well, I'm not, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, and then I don't want them to think that I'm the, the Grim Reaper. I just want them to, to understand that.
Need to be aware of.
That's tough times, it's tough times.
Right.
That's part of being a king. Making tough choices that cut you deep.
Well, actually.
I'm part of being a leader, I guess.
We'll see. Last month, month of June, our appropriations is, is where our sales tax really, really took the hit and.
What are we gonna sign all these?
No, you can just look at them. This is just, essentially, we're just, that's their estimated needs. That's how much each, uh, I, it, it's not on there in comparison to last year, but that's essentially right.
Uh, that's what this one page.
Yeah, that bigger page was.
What's that number right there? Does that mean it's went up one point three percent?
See, that's what I'm talking about. It, it, you know, tough times.
The schools that we have to go to, he doesn't have much of a choice. You know, that's the, that's the thing. One point three's not bad when you consider our schools went from thirty-five dollars a class to a hundred and twenty-five dollars a class. And when they're mandated by the law, you don't have a choice. We have to go to them.
I understand that, but.
And a portion of that one point three, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss next deal because that's, uh, that's the one, two, and three percent wages is in the next item. So.
So that's part of that too, yes.
I, I, I just don't wanna end up being on the wrong side of where we need to be. And if you don't think ahead.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with you, but I mean, by the same token, I, do we, do we, uh, penalize them? I mean, for one thing, I mean, as of right now, until we know for sure and we get an advance warning, like I said, we're, we're free to sit here and watch the, the sales tax come by monthly and where we're at in comparison to knowing what we, our needs are, and that's what the needs are, and that's, uh, and we can use last year's budget, just like I did this year, that where we're at is at an even wash this year. Uh, I mean, we, we exactly, we have brought in with Ad Valorem and the sales tax exactly what we're, we're putting out there, what it's costing us. Now, yes, a drop is okay, but in the same token, we'll, we'll say, for instance, this wind farm's coming in. Now, and maybe that work doesn't start till the mid, till like the first of seventeen or whenever. We'll, you know, we watch, uh, do we make personnel cuts? And then the thing in six months picks back up? I mean, that's, that's been part of a planning process that's went on for a long time, John. I mean, there's a reserve to take care of some of those bad times to get, get ready for a good time. You know, I mean, that, that's been part of the plan, the long picture in the reserves we've got.
Well, that's, that's the thing. I just don't wanna have to depend on our reserves too much.
Well, I, I don't question, it bears watching, but that's, uh, if anybody's got a crystal ball, I'm welcome to look at it if they can tell us what's gonna happen, you know, I don't know.
We just need to keep everyone aware of what. And that's, that's basically what I'm.
I mean, I don't think.
Want them to keep, be aware of what's going on. Be surprised if, if things don't go out like they want and say, well, why didn't we, why didn't we think about it? Well, or talk about it or?
Well, I mean, I, I know on my part, I definitely have been watching the figures closely. And it lost us on Ad Valorem, about a hundred and thirty thousand on Ad Valorem doing the twenty rigs not being here the first of the year that were here the year before. Hopefully, infrastructure and things like that, but I see a really, this year come January or come January of two thousand and seventeen's gonna be a critical deal because if that wind farm comes in, they more than four times take care of those twenty rigs lost. But we won't get those depending on when they're built, you know, and so you, you've got to sit here and plan those. If they put in what they said, the hundred and thirty or whatever wind farm, that's four times what we lost in the rig count.
Are we gathering anything off this, these four volatile wells that are coming back on tax line?
Well, we're supposed to, but we have no control of that. That's all going on.
We don't see, we don't, we don't know how much it is or?
No. We have no clue. All you can do is get that monthly report from the Oklahoma Tax Commission and try to guess. Guess where, where the increase or decrease.
I don't know if there was some way we.
And, and that's really hard to tell because the price, that's a percentage of the price of the oil and gas. It's not, that's off what they sell. It's not a flat rate like the, the gas and diesel tax. The gas and diesel tax is pretty easy, but it's, there again, that gas and diesel tax is a statewide deal.
Right.
That's divvied out per miles of road after they, to each county and license plates. That just tells you what's going on in the state.
Right.
And it, it, it's been going down everywhere in the state, but that's referring to our highway money about as much as anything.
Our appropriations.
Which is the highway money, which is not budgeted. And it, it's a tough, it's a tough call. You just gotta, we're, we're the toughest ones. We don't know what that's gonna do. At least you get a figure to look at kind of a year in advance with these to know where we're at.
Our little month.
Our sheds is month by month with no clue.
Oh, I know. It's a shot in the dark.
And personal service hits our, us worse outside of maybe the sheriff's office. Hits us much harder than it does the offices here in the courthouse because there's so many more employees at each shed.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, it's a, it's a huge deal for all three of us to keep an eye on that.
Well, and, and that's what I mean. We've got that battle that we've got to watch out for and plan for. But this here's kinda, you can kinda look at that and say, hell, here it comes, you know? And that's all I was just wanting to make sure that everybody's aware of.
Right. And I think everybody's been pretty frugal. I mean, the next thing we're looking at is, is to, if anything, is to cut positions, and I think that's the last thing we wanna do as long as. But the first thing is gonna be our call, and that'll be now on item fifteen. We're gonna take no action, or you want us to?
No, I think we need to go ahead and approve those, and that way, um,
Okay.
I can present them next month to the, um, EXICE board.
Okay.
Officers will be free to, to, to present them, so.
Well, I'll make that motion then.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixteen, is this for this or, okay. Number sixteen, discussion and possible action regarding resolution for budget two thousand and sixteen seventeen salaries.
He seconded, didn't he?
Yes, he did.
Yes.
And what this is, is what we set up.
Your one and two percent?
One, two, and three percent, and that's one to nine years is one percent, ten to fifteen years is two percent, and from sixteen to retirement or whenever they quit, three percent. Now, that's essentially a longevity or cost of living way. It's more of a longevity than cost of living because we don't keep that cost of living as, as a deal. It's, uh, that, I'm in favor of, of going ahead with that for the time being. That's gonna be something that, first off, we look at really hard next year.
I mean, this could change. We could change that if we.
We just approve it year by year.
Yeah, yeah, it's a year by year.
Is there a number, what, what that cost us or? Or what it's gonna cost us next year whenever Bob is into the?
Depends on.
You know what I'm saying?
I can sure do that.
Everybody's situation is different. And I'm the one that devised that, came up with that. I can tell you this.
I'm good with it.
Well, I mean, there's a big variation, but if we feel like we can't afford it, we don't have to approve that. There's been a lot of years since I've been here that there were no raises. This is just a, a, a deal for our appreciation or, or for longevity. For one thing, at the county level, anybody.
To keep a good hand there.
Yes.
You know, that's a lot to do with that.
At fifteen years, they have maxed out on vacation. There's no incentive to keep that hand that's been there without something like this.
If Bob starts two days and he makes the same money.
I will tell you this, that's based on the fact, and you have to watch it, that, that a third, thirty-three percent of the people that go to work for the county won't make it to fifteen years. They'll go on, they'll move, whatever, because if everybody gets to that three percent at some point, we can't, we won't be able to afford it. I mean, it's, it was just a statistical deal that I came up with that I had to come up with at my, at our shed. That one percent, I caught a lot of people didn't like the one percent for the first nine years, but I think it takes five years. A new employee costs you money in the first five years.
So they get one percent the first nine years?
Yes.
And then two percent from what?
From ten to fifteen.
Ten to fifteen, and then from fifteen to twenty, they're up to three percent.
Till retirement. They're, when they get above fifteen percent, it ups them three percent a year. But I think that we either, my situation is, is, is if we shut it off, we shut it off across the board or we, we enact it, you know, one or the other. No raises or this raise.
You know, it seems you can almost draw a year or a timeline in there of people that stayed.
Okay, is this money coming from our money or is it coming?
Both. This affects, the, the same deal is for across the board for county employees. And our, our employees comes out of our highway money.
It could affect your budget because of your employees, right?
That's, well, that one point three percent, a, a good part of that one point three percent increase you saw were raises for personal services. You know, that, um.
Golly, that's tough.
But it's, it's a little better now because we're not fighting oil fields as far as employment goes, but still getting somebody to stay and trying to keep good health.
And you invest all that money and then they leave because they're not getting paid well enough. Maybe start all over, invest in again.
But, and unless we really reneg, I guess if things got really bad, that we could, we could change this. I don't know in the middle of the year. I don't know about that.
Let's just say.
If it had to change.
Our money dried up way down in there.
Well, it's gonna, it, it's gonna reflect on us. The money we have that, the Ad Valorem and the sales tax, like I said, that we have to function on for the next year, it's there to cover this. For, for the budget, for the courthouse.
Change though your personnel, buddy. Just, let's use mine for example.
Well, it depends on how many of these three percenters you got, yeah.
And like I say, I can show you, on those sheets, in fact, I've got it up there. I can go get it. On those sheets that I had you guys, um, look over for employees, um, it showed on there how much yours would increase per, you know, this next year. How each office would increase.
But that, that leaves us, that leaves us some, some flutter though, either way.
Well, the big hit comes.
Left it like it is, we, we've got the option of.
Oh, I don't think there's anything. That's, all rules are made to be changed.
Yeah, you can rescind any, any resolution.
Yeah. But we're kinda like the legislature. They, they don't do it in the middle of a, a deal. We really should be prepared to go to next July, I must want to tell you. I mean, that's, uh, but if it mandated, what, what concerns me is, the only big concern is, it affects us at the sheds more because we don't have that guaranteed source of money. We just take what they send us. And we've got way more employees. I mean, you know, each one of our shed, you take the sheriff away, we've got almost as many employees as those other four elected officials.
Right.
So, put together, so it, it, uh.
Well, that's what I mean. It affects us more.
Yes, yes.
And us getting our money and not actually driving a budget.
Right. And it's just something that we have, we have to deal with, and that's, that's one of the things to, to plan or that's one of your management skills that you need to have to, to look at that, those monthly appropriations as they come in, see where they're going, what you can or can't do. A lot of times the public might not like that if you can't afford to spend that much on the roads or, or whatever. Equipment costs, your fixed costs, you can only change them so much, except the equipment costs are part of that fixed cost at each shed, and that's, that's one of the things that you can control. That and personnel. You have a hard time controlling the, the minimum on electric bills and, and that. One, one of the things we do have in our favor is fuel is not nearly as expensive. It's a whole lot better buying this under two dollar diesel than it is buying four dollar diesel or a, to operate them.
Okay.
But, uh, and it, and we're just like them. I mean, we gotta watch and, and, but I.
Now, when you guys did this, when you made this
Yes.
in effect, now there is a.
Is that when they done it?
Well, it was done in.
Probably eleven or twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah.
Now, is there a, is there a, is there a, if tax money goes down or?
No, no, no.
The?
No.
Highway money, what are you?
No.
I thought, I didn't know.
There's no triggering mechanism on this one at all.
It is what it is.
Yes, I mean.
We can trigger it ourselves at the next fiscal year.
As a whole, yes, yes. It's our call entirely.
But there's no automatic.
That added incentive pay or whatever that, that, that comes as, at the Christmas time or in December is, is triggered, has some triggering mechanisms built in. And I'll tell you right now, I'm pretty certain that that, that one's not gonna happen this year.
I never risked it this far.
No, this one is just, this one is just considered longevity. Uh, because it's based on years of service and that's, uh, it was just a set deal that we, to be a little more consistent and pop up, go two years with no pay raise and then, then say, okay, we're gonna give them a hundred or two hundred dollars a month increase. It, it was just something to attract new employees, and they knew what was gonna happen.
But it, it still leaves us the option.
Every year.
Every year.
Yeah, or no. So, and, and I'm in favor. I don't wanna, it, it, the one that really, it affects us the most, but it also keeps those long-term employees, the two and three percent's what hits you the hardest. But if you've had that employee around that long, you, he, they deserve.
He might be worth six percent more.
Yeah.
You get your money back.
I, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve this to go on.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any new business that we're signing? Did I sign in the right place?
Yeah, I'm just on the top.
Okay, oh, yeah.
The other one I've got.
She hasn't marked, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
I figured I'd do it wrong if I could.
Tried.
Anybody got any new business?
I don't have any.
Just a purchase order from the treasurer that I brought with me to be signed. I don't know.
Yeah, I can sign it. Yeah, we don't have to run it through the meeting case.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if it needs to be fully closed up. On the front page there, just the initial right here, accepting extended warranty.
You got any new business, Lynn? Just old business? Had a new day, right?
Saturday was nice, man.
My old bicycling's been slowing way down. Don't take near as much to get the heart rate up or the sweat rolling.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I got Smiley, you're up. Motion to adjourn.
Took care of you last time.
You did? I, I just about rolled back.
I thought you might.
I'll make that motion when you adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor, we're done.